Keeping the lumberyard in business today.
Doing my part.
I'm keeping. Hot.
Okay. Let's see.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what she said. She was talking about a consent.
Brady's got it when you do the agenda, he'll. Have to be announced.
Got my new computer at work yesterday. Game's kind of like a big screen.
Huge font.
Hey, Mickey.
Long time no see.
Morning, Mickey. We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's take a look at the agenda. And any suggestions for change?
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple. Pull items G and H, the fireworks fuel agreements, county attorney.
Consent agenda?
Yeah, consent agenda, G and H. Has a couple of changes to suggest, and then there's one I also noticed on there. And 7A, I'm going to ask to remove 7A, which is revolving loan fund exchange. There's just one piece of information we need from their attorney. He's out of town, so we'll do that on October 9th.
So pull that one. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we could also add item 4D, which would be approve the posting of an engineering technician supervisor. The position is under 3M, approving the job description, but we actually need specific action to post the vacancy.
So Molly Brady pulled G and H off the consent agenda? Was that the two you wanted pulled?
The two leases to the Gunflint, or to the fire departments.
No, then we need, then we need B and C.
Okay.
All the leases, I'm sorry. B and C.
Not Firewise.
Okay, not Firewise.
Commissioner DuKirk. Okay.
I need my ears out this morning.
Will I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
So moved. I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Public comment period. At this time, the public is welcome to address the county board on any matter of county concern. When invited to speak, please state your name, address, and the topic you are addressing. Members of the public may speak respectfully for up to five minutes. The public comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. County board members may ask or answer questions of the speaker, but issues shall not be debated during the public comment period. At the board's discretion, the board may agree to schedule matters addressed during the public comment period on the current board agenda or a future board agenda. All discussions must be civil in nature and must be directed at the board, not at any other members of the public. Anyone like to come forward? Artis, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Artis.
This morning, I'd like to comment about the discussions around transparency and around meetings and public information. I heard a discussion on the radio, and the question was asked of our new potential members. And it occurred to me that the one thing that people don't realize, maybe, or they do realize and they don't give credit to, is in order for you to be transparent, for people to be able to come and ask you questions and get answers, that means they have to trust the process. And I'm not so sure that people trust the process. The district meetings on the budget were not greatly attended. I understand from some people, they didn't trust the process, so why did they bother to go? The issue about the committee of the whole and whether that should be put out there for people or not, or whether the voice, or there's, I know there's no picture, but the fact that it happens, but it doesn't happen consistently. If people wanted to hear something, wanted to see the discussion, hear the discussion, maybe this month it's on, maybe next month it's not. In order to, for people to speak to you, to trust you, and I'm talking about the whole government process, there needs to be some consistency. And that's not just three months, and then it's, something is put aside for a month because something happens. It means that it has to go on for a long time, years. And because the government boards are continually changing, something has to be picked up on one end and carried through as the members, as the government people change, but the process can't. People have to know that the process works, that if I start a conversation with this group of commissioners, that if there are new commissioners, they'll pick up and they'll continue the process, that they won't interrupt it, that they won't put it aside. This whole idea about trying to get people to talk to you is, okay, for instance, WOLD, that was a discussion on the consent agenda last time. Were there enough people there to even know that this is going on? Do people understand that we're talking about millions of dollars, potentially, in building a new building for law enforcement and building a new building for public health? Do they know enough to come and ask you some questions, so that you get some different ideas, a different sense about what's going on? Again, I don't think that level of trust is there, and I don't know how you build it, except to start to be extremely consistent, to do what you say you're going to do. Publish things in the newspaper, I know, that doesn't always work. Put things on tip or boreal, or whatever the mechanisms are, that doesn't always work. But if you get to one or two people in each of those different venues of public information, maybe you'll get one or two people who will actually start paying attention, who will start getting their neighbors to ask questions. This whole, I sat through the WOLD discussion, and twice, enough to know that there's enough paper out there to choke a horse. And you start looking at all those graphs and that information, and it overwhelms you. I don't believe what they say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll go to the consent agenda items. We've removed two, B and C, and so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. You want Firewise pulled?
I guess it doesn't have to be pulled, but just note, the name on H is incorrect. The actual, where the signature is, it says Nazgoda, and it should be TNT Timber. It's been changed in all the other documentation, but in your copies, it's incorrect. So it's TNT Timber.
Okay, with those changes, then? Motion to approve?
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have number four.
We have to do B and C.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you for helping me out.
Yep.
Do you want to do them now, or do you want to do them with?
So B and C are going to be announcements?
They're pulled for another day?
I'd like to address them with the other agreements at the, at my time on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we'll turn it to our county engineer, Kristen Foster, for a couple of action items and one information item.
Good morning, Commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public. I'm here with a few items today. I will start with 4C, which is the informational item. No action requested at this time. Soil and Water Conservation District and I wanted to update the Commissioners and members of the listening audience on the Friedenberg Creek culvert replacement. As some may remember, we do have a culvert replacement in next year's construction plans at Two Island River on Highway 1. And if funding became available, it would be nice to also replace the culvert on Friedenberg Creek, which is very near Two Island River. The culvert on Friedenberg Creek is also in poor condition, but we alone don't have sufficient funds to prioritize that. At the same time, the Soil and Water Conservation District found a grant opportunity that they're exploring that might provide up to 75% of funding for that project, which would minimize our match funds to 25%. So we don't have any information yet on if we have the grant, but we have submitted an application in concert with the SWCD, and we expect to hear more on that opportunity later this winter, maybe December or January.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? All right, we'll go on to Bridge Inspection Services, and this will be an action item.
Yes, bridge inspections are one of the responsibilities of the Highway Department on an ongoing basis. It is most efficient if we can complete them with our in-house resources, but we don't have that ability right now. Last year, as some may recall, Cook County hired MinDOT to assist with annual bridge inspection requirements, and this year, we are looking at other options. I'm here today to report that we solicited for proposals to complete this year's bridge inspections. Cook County received four proposals from different engineering firms at the Highway Department, and we are seeking authorization to move ahead with the lowest-cost qualified consultant, which would be MSA Professional Services, at a cost of $7,946 for the field work and computer entries associated with meeting bridge inspection requirements here in Minnesota. At the same time, this is a capacity that we're working to build at the Highway Department. Earning that certification in-house takes four years if a person has a civil technician degree, or five years without that civil technician degree. So as we look ahead at filling the fourth vacancy within the engineering team, we're also building capacity with our existing three techs towards meeting that, those requirements to minimize our expenses in this area in the future.
So questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Kristen, for the thoughtful process. It makes sense. We can't do it in-house, so we have to do it outside. So I know further down on the agenda, we will be posting, possibly posting a vacancy. And we've been understaffed in the Engineering Department or the Highway Department for a long time. So I guess my question is, once we have that capacity, it's probably hard to put apples to apples, like what it costs in-house compared to what it costs outhouse, but it makes sense to do certain things outhouse. Can you just comment on, is it a lot cheaper to do it? I mean, it's just part of our process, and we can do a lot of things in-house, then.
Yes, Commissioner Severson, thank you for clarifying. The work required of bridge inspections varies from year to year. Some years, it's two weeks of full-time work. Other years, it's four weeks of full-time work. We inspect certain bridges every year or two, and certain box culverts every four years, which is the reason there's variability in the time required to complete the work. This year is one of our lesser workloads in comparison. So it's hard to estimate apples to apples for the very reason that the bridge inspection program varies from year to year. But this year, we would be looking at two weeks of work, so 80 hours times the salary plus fringe of an engineering supervisor, an engineering technician, like, can't do that math quickly in my head.
That's not important, yeah.
It's undoubtedly, there's a benefit to us in working towards developing these skills and qualifications at the Cook County Highway Department in the future, and we are working towards that.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Desha? Comments?
Yeah. What's in the, how many bridges do we have to inspect?
So this fall, and through next June, we have 25 inspections to complete.
And last year, we didn't have the capacity to do it, so we had MinDOT come and do it, and we ended up with four bridges that failed, correct?
If I could, there was, last year, we had a staff change, and the person that we had that was certified to do bridge inspections was not here to finish the process. So MinDOT did step in and complete this for us, so that we weren't penalized, didn't lose any sources of funding, and helped us through that process very late in the year. The proposals that we got for this year range from the $7,000 number presented to almost, yeah, almost four times that. So given the fact that we don't have the capacity in-house to do this right now, I think that this is a very good value, and I don't know if we're one or two years away from having the capacity internally to do this ourselves, but we are working towards that.
Thank you, Administrator Cadwell, and also to Commissioner Desha. Last fall, Cook County did not have a program administrator at the time either. There are two roles to the bridge inspection process. We're seeking assistance with the field work and documentation required, which is considered team lead. The second role that you now have in having a county engineer is program administrator. So it would be the program administrator who makes recommendations to the board and decisions about any follow-up that might result from this year's bridge inspections, and that is a service that MinDOT provided last year.
Thank you. Ms. Chair, DuKirk?
No questions.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second?
Support.
Support. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, another action item, contract amendment authorization.
I'm pleased to bring forward a different alternative for Cook County's Cross River Bridge on North Gunflint Lake Road, which is County Road 46. We had been working with an engineering design firm to design a concrete structure at this location. Commissioner DuKirk and I had the opportunity to listen to some of the concerns from the community over the course of the fall, and based on what we're hearing from the neighborhood, but also the cost of the project, today, I'm here to ask for board authorization to amend that design contract, to change the bridge alternative from concrete to timber. Now, in looking at Erickson Engineering's proposal for this work, I will start with structure services not being something that we provide in-house. I think we've had that discussion before, but as a little refresher, there isn't enough of a demand to hire a second PE for Cook County and develop structural engineering expertise at a small county. This is a service that is regularly contracted. And in this case, although $32,534 isn't a small amount from our transportation sales tax proceeds, it is less than half the price of what a bridge would ordinarily cost to design. When this firm was working on the concrete alternative, fortunately, they have some field work, permitting work, survey data, that can be reused towards changing it to a timber bridge, and we are expecting some savings in construction costs moving forward with a timber bridge as opposed to a concrete structure. So at this time, we are asking for board authorization to move ahead with amending this project to a timber bridge at the cost of $32,534 and authorizing the engineer to sign that contract amendment, unless there are any questions on the project.
Ms. Chair, DuKirk?
The residents who use this bridge have all along wanted a timber bridge, and we were not able to provide a timber bridge previously. I know you have better information or way to explain this than I do, but Kristen has been able to find some resources and ability to go back from concrete to timber. So it's not that we're redesigning it and changing everything, we just didn't have the ability prior to maintain it as a timber bridge with the funding sources we had, correct?
Commissioner DuKirk, thank you for the information. Yes, it's important to clarify that we were looking at using state aid funds for this project previously, with, which come with different structural design requirements than what we can use with local transportation sales tax funds, or potentially the new UT Roads funding assistance that we're exploring. Both of those funding programs allow us to have more flexibility in our design standards, which is the reason for the change.
I want it to be less expensive to do it this way.
Ms. Chair, Desha?
Yeah, I think it's a good way to go with the amount of traffic that's on there. It's not a whole lot, and it's going to be substantially cheaper this way, so.
Ms. Chair, Severson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my only question is, I, obviously, they're making this decision based on aesthetics, I'm assuming.
It's a big part of it.
Obvious assumption. Which makes sense, and it sounds like the amount of traffic that it gets, it doesn't warrant that kind of building, concrete versus timber. But I'm just wondering about the longevity, so over time, does a timber bridge hold up as well as a concrete bridge? However, it's hard, again, apples to apples, the traffic on the timber bridge.
Thirty-five was concrete.
Good point, okay, nevermind. Yeah, I realize concrete isn't perfect either.
No, it's not.
Commissioner Severson, that's a great question, and we would expect a lesser life cycle from a timber bridge. As you mentioned, this, or somebody mentioned, this bridge does carry a comparatively low volume of traffic, which allows us to consider a timber bridge in other areas where we might not, with life cycle being one of those considerations. A concrete structure might last 100 years, a timber bridge might last 50 to 75, but if we run those life cycle costs based on the traffic that this location serves, I still believe it's a prudent alternative for Cook County to consider.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts? Ready to move on?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approving posting of a maintenance supervisor.
Mr. Chair, if I could introduce this briefly, and then Kristen can jump in here, but when we had our vacancy in highway engineer last year, we know that we were looking at our technician, our group of engineering technicians, and we've been budgeted and always had four positions there. We haven't always had four people there. And one of the considerations that we had, as we were figuring out what this department looks like, the engineering department looks like, was whether we were going to have four technicians, each of them reporting to the county engineer, or whether we were going to appoint a supervisor within this group and have that person coordinate the work of the group of four people. And after having been here for several months and working with our staff and still working with the vacancy, there's two primary reasons why we believe approving the technician supervisor position and going forward this way will make more sense. A, the management and the coordination of all those projects is difficult for Kristen to do on a day-to-day basis, when she's in the office two to three days a week here. And then, the other one is, we have not been able to fill that fourth technician position, and we believe by adding a supervisor position, we may have a better opportunity to bring somebody in, or to have room for growth within that department for our existing technicians. So those are the two primary reasons, and then I'll let Kristen add anything she might want to add.
Thank you, Administrator Cadwell. From a workload perspective, I mentioned that we are looking for outside assistance with bridge inspections this year. Additionally, at a supervisor level, the highway engineer would spend more of my or his or her time on other things, such as responding to public priorities, responding to Commissioner questions. There are other things that the county engineer would focus that person's time on, if I didn't spend as much time on the technical details of the position. As Administrator Cadwell mentioned, we do have that engineering technician position posted currently. It's been vacant for about six months, and without a fourth employee in some capacity at the Cook County Highway Department, we will be looking for even more consultant assistance with next year's construction program at a significantly higher cost than having this staff in-house at either a technician or a supervisor level. In the past, we have talked about the assistant engineer position at the Highway Department, and also, as I mentioned earlier, we aren't seeing a workload need for a small county to have a second PE, but we haven't been successful in recruiting at the technician position, and the added responsibilities of having a supervisor would benefit the Highway Department, and we would spend more time on other things. We have not filled the maintenance supervisor position either, so right now, we are working with only one supervisor at the Cook County Highway Department with the county administrator's assistance, and that would be our accountant is the only supervisor we have for a large department.
Any other comments, questions? Ready for motion?
We're not getting any applications for this technician job.
Commissioner Desha, we have received two applications in the past six months, and one of them advanced to the interview phase, but we have not received any other qualified applicants.
If I could also add, at the Personnel Committee level, and with the additional context of Engineer Foster's comments, we don't believe that the wages that we're offering, that the job descriptions that we're offering, they're consistent with the region. It's more a matter of the number of people that there are available to fill these positions. And so what the posting would look like if it's approved is, we would be posting for a technician and/or technician supervisor. We would have two postings, and we would only bring to the board to fill to the number of positions that have been approved. So we're trying to add some flexibility. We've done similar things in Health and Human Services related to the public health coordinator or the public health nurse. You know, we're filling one position, but we've got two positions and two levels of background for each of those. So it's one of the tactics that we're having to develop related to the labor market.
Good approach. Someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Support?
Support.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have Mr. Lane with us.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen, for all you do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two, two immediate items on the agenda today. One is Chris Rorit, and the other is Brennan Mulanifee. Both of those individuals actually happen to be neighbors up on Boreal Lane. They were found to be operating a vacation rental by owner, VRBO, in the LR2 Lutzen Residential Incentive District. And in that district, ironically, unlike all the other residential districts in Cook County, requires a conditional use permit to operate a VRBO. So upon finding that out, I contacted both, we'll deal with Mr. Rorit first, and informed him that in fact, a permit was required, and we issued a cease and desist order, primarily because it was an action that needed to be addressed immediately. Both he and his neighbor advertised. advertised pretty visibly on the VRBO website. They'd been doing so for the last year-plus, but doing so without a permit. So in trying to separate out the economic contribution that VRBOs potentially have in Cook County versus the lack of a permit, we immediately sided with the need to get the permit. So issuing a cease and desist, Mr. Rorrett was very amenable to stopping operations. He immediately stopped advertisement on the VRBO and paid an after-the-fact fee and basically came through the process that we prescribed, which was the Planning Commission and subsequently the Board of Commissioners. The big issue here, and this applies to Mr. Malanafi as well, is that the Lutzen zoning mosaic has kind of complicated some ownership issues. And I've actually been to the Lutzen Township Board meetings a couple of times now. It is formerly a residential landscape for zoning. That LR2 zone, we've had three issues now where people have assumed they can do a VRBO, vacation rental home, but it isn't allowed in that LR2 zone district. So it isn't our preference to come in and be fairly ham-handed with property owners. But in this case, it kind of serves a purpose to say, yes, it is a different zone district, yes, there are different criteria, but also that it kind of raises a little warning flag that there are some inconsistencies in the zoning in the Lutzen Town Center plan. But to his credit, Mr. Rorrett did do everything needed to do, and there was very little discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, and in fact, he was unanimously approved for his after-the-fact conditional use permit to provide VRBO operations on his property in the LR2 zone district. Planning Commission respectfully asks that you repeat that vote.
Are we doing both A and B together?
I think we need to do them separate.
Okay.
Any other comment, Commissioner DuKirk? Dushaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question, I realize this isn't our issue, this is the Lutzen Town Center issue, but, well, it's in the county. So both of these properties are located on Boreal Lane, and so I'm just trying to get at the reason for this complexity, or what was the, I know in the notes, David Seaton mentioned that the intention was purposeful. So I'm wondering what that purpose was, to create this layer of conditional use permit?
Commissioner Seabertson, that's a really good question. One of the comments was, hopefully was included in your pack, it was from Jim Vick, who was originally involved in that Lutzen Town Center planning. And at one point, they just, they envisioned more of a thoroughfare from Lutzen up to the ski hill. You know, the incidents, what's happened up there now is that we have, we have four different zone districts within a fairly consistent landscape. Three of those zone districts allow VRBOs and one doesn't. So when you have a patchwork of zoning, the burden really falls on the property owner to identify what is allowed, what is a conditional use. And in this case, that didn't occur. So it's, education obviously is a big component to that, but again, this is a consistent concern from our perspective, that we're subjecting property owners to an additional layer of permitting, which may or may not be relevant.
May not be fair. And that's the other piece that I see. That's why I'm wondering what their reason was for creating the one zone that has this extra layer.
Yeah, that may be enigmatic for me.
Particularly when they all seem to be close in proximity and...
Right.
So I'm just curious about that. I'm in favor of this, I'm just curious about that. So can it be, how would it be changed, or could it be changed pretty easily, the zoning?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Actually, it has to be initiated at the township level.
Right.
Like I said, I've been to the Board of Supervisors meetings a couple of times, and they're aware. We've had to do a couple rezones in that same landscape. So, and what the rezonings are doing is reverting the Lutzen Town Center zone districts over to the original county zoning. So we're just taking a step backward in a couple of those instances. It's a problem of creativity, and I think, I think it can be addressed, but it isn't a pressing issue, obviously, but, again, it's the individuality of the request, and you need a conditional use permit. You don't, in identifying and conveying that to the property owners.
Thank you.
Anything else for any of the commissioners? Entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we have support?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, for Brennan Malanafi?
Malanafi.
Malafi?
Yes, yes, same scenario, different properties, different property owners. Mr. Malanafi was a little resistant to the insistence that he stop advertising, and I believe our county attorney actually got involved in some discussions with him thereafter. He was very compliant and came forward with a process very similar to Mr. Rorrett. Once it was explained to him, and we were able to identify the concerns that we had, which were just discussed for Mr. Rorrett's case, he understood that. Again, with Mr. Malanafi, it was an issue of him just coming forward and going through the process that was well-identified and getting his approval from the Planning Commission, which he did unanimously, and they forwarded it to you again, as with Mr. Rorrett, with the recommendation that you approve his after-the-fact conditional use permit.
Any further questions or comments, Commissioner Seabertson? DuKirk? Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, support or second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third item is Dean Hedstrom, and he owns a condo up on Terrace Point. And if you've been in Cook County since 1983, you understand that Terrace Point has been both visionary residential area and also somewhat problematic for its ownership. What's happened there is that it's a common interest community, meaning that there's a open space component, and there's different sections of the PUD which have resulted in, at this point, three homeowners association groups within like a five-acre PUD. So basically, there's kind of, it takes the approach of almost a sovereignty issuer. The condo homeowners and the Inn at Terrace Point homeowners all have different say over different areas. What Dean, what Mr. Hedstrom wanted to do was to build a garage, which is included in the Second Amendment of CIC 16, and he wanted to amend that to allow him to create a separate private garage outside of the constraints of the CIC covenants and declarations. That's a long-winded way of saying it's really an internal issue. He has to confirm that, in fact, his open space allotment isn't constrained by construction of the 600-square-foot garage. He had a survey verify that, in fact, he's still with the PUD in itself, is still over the 60% open space threshold. So there isn't an impingement on that requirement. And then he just has to find a place where he can put that, which doesn't constrict with other owners, other user groups, homeowners associations. And he's found that, and actually, he's in the, in front of the Board of Adjustment tomorrow night for a special meeting to give him variance relief from the Highway 61 right-of-way setback and the bluff setback, so he can slot his garage into that space. So all homeowner groups, homeowner individuals signed off on this, and now the burden is on him and the associations to modify the declarations, which is identified as the Third Amendment to CIC 16, the Inn at Terrace Point. It was approved unanimously, and again, the Planning Commission asked that you echo that vote.
Questions, Commissioner Dushaw?
Nope.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Maybe you'll get lucky and find some of that rare Thompsonite that's under there.
Make it all worthwhile.
It probably was in my childhood, so first Thompsonite, first the one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, yeah, this is, that sounds like a pretty complex scenario, and it's mostly their things, but our thing is just to, is about open space. Is that what our piece of it is?
Yeah, that's a requirement of the subdivision ordinance. Yeah, so...
And that element is being...
It's an internal regulation with external oversight. So the PUD was approved initially through a conditional use permit, and it's been amended twice, and now the third time that permit will be amended, and it will be reflected in the language.
So my other question, then, and this is probably really none of my business, but, but is this the only garage?
There are a couple, the Second Amendment actually removed three condos in favor of two condos with garages.
Of garages.
So that amendment reflected the construction of garage. This is going to be separate. The two Second Amendment garages were connected to the residential units. This is going to be a separate unit, so it's going to have its little slot kind of up in the northwest corner.
So is this pretty much end possible future of garages? I mean, is this the last garage?
Well, that's a discussion that we've had, and that, you know, the threshold of open space is a threshold that can't be budged.
Right.
So I think we're at 61% right now, so that might allow for some wiggle room for a couple of additional garages. Mr. Hedstrom and I had that conversation, that the concern that we have is that it's going to be the springboard, two more people wanting garages, and then potential compromise of the PUD, and we would have to interject and not allow that process to occur.
Okay.
We have Mr. Hedstrom here, so thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
In case we had any questions, but anything else, ready to move on?
Motion to approve.
Support?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number six, County Attorney Hickon has a couple of items for us to take action on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to suggest, I see that there's kind of an error on the agenda, that there, my slot is at 9:15, and actually, the revolving loan fund appears below my time, but is at 9:10, and I see we have a couple of members of the committee here. I'm happy to address my issues after them, if we want to accommodate them, either way.
Either way, the applicant was coming also. He's not here yet. He was going to be here, what, 9:25, I think.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'll proceed. We have the land exchange being finalized Thursday. That's the day after tomorrow, after a very long time. And so that's exciting. I have several agreements to address in front of the board today, which are intended to preserve the rights of the third parties that had rights in the federal land when it was under federal ownership. I need to continue with those rights beyond when that land exchanges ownership on Thursday. There are six such agreements. One just passed in the consent agenda. I pulled two out of the consent agenda, and there are two in my 9:15 schedule. One of these did not appear on the agenda, although it was submitted. So I'd like to start off by passing out copies of, this is a right-of-way agreement for the Gitchigami State Trail on a parcel of land in Taftie. And I would like to ask that the board amend the agenda to add this item after the break, the intent being that the commissioners have an opportunity to review that, come up with any questions they might have for me, and that hopefully we can address that and get approval for it after the break. So I would be asking for a motion to amend the agenda, wherever you want to put this, but to add the agreement for a right-of-way with the state of Minnesota for the Gitchigami State Trail after the break.
So we need to take action on that?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, comments, or, Commissioner Dushaw?
Nope.
DuKirk?
No. I would make the motion to add to the agenda for after the break, the Gitchigami Trail and the state.
Yes, the right-of-way agreement.
The right-of-way agreement.
Support?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll do that immediately after the break.
Apologize for that. With so many agreements on the agenda, I guess we didn't double-check that that one actually wound up on it. I will then go to the two items that are listed for 9:15 a.m., starting with the right-of-way utilities license for Century Link and Quest. This is on, this is on page, I have written down the page number, but, so this is for the purpose of utilities, a right-of-way crossing a parcel that is involved in the land exchange. Parcels, actually, three parcels, seven, eight, and 14, as listed in the land exchange agreement. Page 213 of your packet. You've had a chance to review this agreement already. There are some highlighted provisions in the version that you got in your packet regarding fees. This is the one third-party agreement in which the third-party quest or Century Link was making payment to the federal government for their right-of-way easement. The county, in turn, should be receiving some payment in exchange for the right-of-way, and the reason why those provisions are highlighted is because I had to confirm that they were actually paying under the federal government. But the first highlighted provision in the recitals states, "In consideration of $1 and other good and valuable consideration," I'd like the commissioners to approve this agreement with a change to that recital, which is consistent with the fee agreement. Paragraph 13 on page three, which is also highlighted, would remain the same. "The licensee shall pay rent determined by this federal schedule, United States Department of Agriculture, as adjusted annually." It's a nominal fee. I don't have the exact number for you, but we will sort that out. I'm asking for a motion to authorize execution of the right-of-way license for utilities to Century Link Corporation effective September 27th, with the changes that I've noted.
Questions, comments, Commissioner DuKirk?
None.
Commissioner Dushaw?
Is this the tiny mountain one?
No.
I don't have that one in my pocket.
No, I don't either, but I think I get the gist of it. I got two...
I got two of the Gitchigami Trail ones now. I got two of the Gitchigami Trail ones now.
Yeah, I got two, yeah, two of those too.
It's in the digital form.
But it's in the digital format, yes, yeah.
You took it with the digital form, so you should have had it.
Yeah, we have access to the digital.
I can certainly describe more. But essentially, this is a 10-feet corridor that travels across these three parcels. And it's for the placement of underground fiber optic cable and power line.
Good.
Commissioner DeShaw, are you okay?
I'm okay.
Well, good. Yes, I would make the motion to approve the land exchange agreement that Attorney Hickon has prepared with Century Link.
We have a motion?
Support.
Great, thank you.
We have a support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I could have, should I have read this?
Okay, then we go to Pine Mountain Tower?
Thanks.
So this is the second of the third-party agreements. If you're on the digital packet, you can find it on page 227 of the packet.
Yeah, I got that one.
This is a ground lease with the state of Minnesota's Department of Transportation for a tower in the area referred to as Pine Mountain. This is an armored tower, so it has that public safety component to it. I've prepared a resolution, which I'm going to distribute. We're asking that the board approve this resolution and delegate authority to Mr. Cadwell to sign it. And then I'm also asking the board to authorize execution of the ground lease for tower space to the Department of Transportation effective September 27, 2018. That's the language on our request for time before the board. The one change that is made since the time that the packet was distributed is a change to the term. This was, originally had a longer term, but our very helpful and competent land commissioner pointed out that for tax forfeit properties, which these will all be classified as following the exchange, we can just have a 10-year term lease. So from the version that's in your packet, this one has been amended to a 10-year term with options for five-year renewals. So one more time, I'm asking for two things.
Okay.
One, that the board authorize the resolution, which agrees to sign the agreement. And two, that the board authorize execution of the ground lease to Minn-Doc.
Okay, so any questions, Commissioner DuKirk, about either one of these? And we'll try to have a discussion on both of these. And then we'll try to make two separate motions for each one.
No questions. You all know that I support communication towers in my district.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Question?
No questions.
Okay, so then we should have a motion on the first item?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and support.
Seconded that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we'll entertain a motion on the lease?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, action taken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the two agreements that were part of the consent agenda, but were pulled. It's a ground lease to the Maple Hill Volunteer Fire Department for their fire hall. And also a ground lease to the Gunflint Trail Volunteer Fire Department, both effective at the time of the land exchange. These are, were on the consent agenda because they were previously approved just without a start date. So these agreements that were presented as part of the packet add the start date of September 27, 2018. And the reason I pulled them from the consent agenda is because I also need to make that change to the term. So, for example, the Maple Hill Fire Department originally had a 20-year term in this draft. We're changing that to a 10-year term with two renewal periods of five years, with the same change to the Gunflint Trail Fire Department ground lease. We don't need separate resolutions in this, in these ones. We just need the board to authorize execution by the vice chair of the two ground leases to the volunteer fire departments.
So you want us to take action on that? From what I understand, by a motion for both, or one at a time? For both to authorize, okay.
I would ask for two separate motions. One motion for each of the ground leases.
Okay, so any discussion on any of those two items? Commissioner Severson?
No discussion or no questions?
Commissioner DeShaw?
No questions.
Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions.
Okay, then we'll take, entertain a motion on the first item, first exchange.
Motion to approve ground lease for Maple Hill Fire Department upon land exchange.
Support?
I'll support that.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay, then for the Gunflint Trail.
Motion to approve ground lease for Gunflint Trail Volunteer Fire Department upon land exchange.
Seconded that.
Okay, we have seconded. And then all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Mr. Powers, are we ready to go on revolving loans?
I think we are. So this is 7B Village North. This is a request from Bruce and Stephen Block, Building Blocks LLC. It's the Village North Housing Project, which you would know as the Gopher Cabin Trailer Park Site. So this is a request for $96,690 revolving loan with a second position mortgage on the project property and assignment of the monthly rents as collateral for the project upon execution of a loan agreement, a security agreement, a promissory note, and authorizing the board chair and auditor treasurer to sign such agreements, with all of the above saying here, "Subject to review and acceptance of the current financial statements by the county auditor and financial coordinator." We have received those, reviewed those, accepted those. The entire committee has seen those and accepted those. Some background, this meeting occurred on August 23, 2018, and with Bruce Block in attendance and Commissioner Bershon. The board has previously approved the $75,000 loan to Bruce and Stephen Block back in February of 2017. It began the project on the Gopher Cabin site. This loan continues that project now known as Village North. The original loan has a balance of about $71,000, and it'll be combined with the new loan of $96,000 for a total of $167,899. And that now requires a market rate of interest. We can't avoid that without going through a process required by the state and which the board has never wished to do. And Bruce and I have discussed that, and he would not be in favor of that either. So Bruce is here, as well as Pat Campanero and Hal Greenwood, if you have any questions regarding the project.
Okay, Commissioner DuKirk, we'll start with you.
So how does this balance out on your balance sheet? Because I've seen the last balance sheet you had. You had the loans separate and the payment terms. It all, you put it all back in order now with the new market rate? Okay.
Yeah, it works.
I know, you had a little wiggle room in there. So for anybody out there watching, this is just another reminder why we don't have a massive influx of contractors building affordable housing. It is not an easy feat to do. You need to be rich and want to invest in your community. So if there are any of you out there, you're welcome to invest. Mr. Block, thank you very much for your efforts for the community and for taking this on. You have hit a lot of bedrock in your project, is the way I'm going to put it. And you have continued to figure out how to manage this and to make this happen. And so, thank you very much.
Just more background, Heidi knows of this because he applied with EDA also. And they've approved a grant of $45,310. He's also applied with TRRB to bring in a water line, a new water line that'll serve all of this new infrastructure. And I think additional infrastructure, the water line would serve even more if you expand it even further, so. And just receive that grant.
The EDA was the applicant that the pastor, Mr. Block, on the ITRRB funding. Yep.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to say thank you to the Block Builders. Is it, that's the name of the company? Building Blocks, yes, yes, Building Blocks. To be doing this kind of work for your community is commendable. And I also commend the EDA for supporting this project, particularly when the number-one priority is housing in Cook County. And this directly begins to solve some of that. So it's very much appreciated. I mean, I really want to ask this question, but you don't have to answer it. Had you known when you started? Would you still be here?
I don't think I've had time to evaluate that question.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about that.
He hit the threshold where not doing it anymore couldn't happen. So he just kept going.
I know, once you get in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
After we found the snake in the wall, then it was.
It was all uphill from there? It's a sign.
Was it constrictor?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, I thought it was frozen. And the wall cavity we were carrying out in one of the cabins and.
Wow, great sign.
The guy was screaming, what's going on? Oh, there's another lie, what's another lie? What is that? So, yeah, I mean, it's, that all, I mean, there's so many stories, you know, firing imaginary demons with machetes, not me, some of the kinders.
Well, that could come.
So anyway, it's a, it's an undertaking.
I want to see the book.
You could write a book and then take those profits to put it.
That's really fascinating, seriously on so many levels.
Commissioner DeShaw? How many units do you have up there now?
Right now, we have, I always got to go through a count because it changes all the time, so. We have 18, and we're adding another nine.
You redo the infrastructure of them?
Yeah, and then, yeah, we're adding the, we're rebooting the trailer park. We're in process with that. And so we're gonna, we're demoing all those units up there. And that project will start next spring. There'll be a clean slate up on top, and we'll be able to, you know, further expand it. I think we're going to target, target that with the department. And below is all efficiencies, what we've added from the Concommoda. And that was just an opportunity for efficiency, to create more capacity when those units begin available. And so that actually, that opportunity arising, kind of, it allowed us, well, shifted our focus because it was when we couldn't pass that up because here we could, you know, create 13 more units and at a pretty low cost. And that's, you know, to meet the targets that you need to meet to make it viable, to create new buildings for loan and housing is pretty difficult. So when opportunities like that come along, those are things you've got to capitalize on. Because otherwise, there's no way to make the numbers work with the rent stamp that can be paid here for loan.
I'd like to just comment, serving on the revolving loan committee and talking to Bruce in the weight room at the Y every once in a while for the last couple of years since he's got into this. It's really commendable what you're doing. And I think for the EDA and revolving loan committee, as well as TRRB, we're collaborating on a community need and working together. And there's a lot of power when you work together. And so this is a good example. But your commitment of you and your family is just really beyond what we'd reasonably expect for a community member, so thank you. So with that, oh, go ahead.
Say that, you know, the commitment that we've been showing from you folks and from the revolving loan fund, from the EDA, that's, that partnership is, I mean, the money, we need, we need the money to move ahead and pace that, if we can get this done. But the collaboration is really an important piece of that because we get your heads in the game with us. And that's invaluable because there's a lot of angles as we go forward. And it seems like it changes, you know, as we just, we're in discovery mode all the time. And so to have Hal and everybody, and Pat, and Mary involved, and you guys on the revolving loan fund board giving us ideas and ruminating things with us, that's been very valuable. And it keeps us from making, you know, you've got to make decisions. You've got to move ahead as you go through this process. And the numbers on this are so fickle, it's so tight, that you can't afford to make a misstep with, or it is perilous. So it's nice to have your support and involvement.
And the winners are the people that really could use this housing and work in our community. And it's all about community, and thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve this loan.
So moved. I'll second it. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, because I think the, this process has taught all of us a lot about the complexities and the peril. And, and I think it speaks to probably some policy changes and needs that we didn't have in place before to create some safety nets. And where was I going with that? Oh, my question then was going to be, so I'm just speaking to the snake that you found on the wall. So you must have, there must be some, you must have some rules about who can live there? Like pet rules, et cetera, safety rules.
Well, constrictors are welcome.
Well, one of the, you know, Leroy was a, Leroy Johnson, who previously owned a property. You know, he gave me a list of things he wished he hadn't done. And one of the things was allowing dogs and pets. Because they're, you know, and how you, but you know, the thing about that too is that the culture's changed a bit. And we have single-unit efficiencies. And so therefore individuals, you know, these new units. And I, and it's really hard, it's been hard to toe the line on that because I think increasingly people are having pets. You know.
It's true.
You know, the, what do they call it? The, when you have a pet and you can take it on the airplane. Emotional support.
Emotional support.
Emotional support. And that's a, that's a, I, it surprised me how many of these folks that are applying have pets. And so, you know, we're trying to navigate that. And, you know, if we can create a criteria, you know, we're kind of like, at this point, we're kind of like, well, let's meet the dog. kind of like, well, let's meet the dog. And, you know, and I don't know that, I don't know how, how that works, you know, legally, but this is, these are things that we're dealing with as we go forward, that we didn't expect to have to spend three days talking about what our policy is on pets, you know, how's that work. And so, there's things that we're discovering along the way, like that.
Yeah, interesting.
You know, when we first moved there, we had, we discovered that there was some methamphetamine feeling going on around the property. And then, how to clean that problem up, you know, it introduced us to the whole array of, you know, consequences and things that we didn't, we didn't anticipate having to deal with, you know. But as we've been on site and kind of governing, things have cleaned up, and it's a happier place, and it's cleaner, and, and the vibe has definitely changed.
And safer.
It's elegant, yeah.
Safer.
So, we, you know, and how to affect that is a crazy, mathematical, what's that thing you have to do mathematically? Anyway, you did the picture.
Yeah.
Equation.
Yeah.
Algorithm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exponentially. Yeah.
Commissioner Severson, did you second that, or?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So I could ask a question.
We have a motion to second, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'd like to comment to, to Hal Greenwood, that he has been very involved with the revolving loan, and I think started it, instituted the whole process, working with the states. So, hats off to you, and thank you, Cadews, for all you've done with that, because it's really, just my short, brief two years on it, it's, I've seen all the good it's done, and I'm, I'm sure that that's exponentially-
Mm-hmm, yeah.
-greater over the period of time. So, thank you, Hal, for all you've done.
Yes, thank you.
So, the second part of this, Mr. Powers, are we gonna deal with that, or delay it?
The revolving loan fund exchange?
Yes.
Yeah, I asked at the outset, we'll move that on to the next meeting.
Okay.
It seems to be the consensus of the committee.
Right.
We just want an answer on one question, and the attorney involved, I think I know the answer, but we want him to look at it and give us the answer, and he's out of town.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Okay, we'll go on to Mr. Cadwell, our county administrator, for an update.
Thank you, Commissioner Bershame. I really have only one update today, and it is related to an issue I think I've mentioned earlier this year, related to the, the property at the school and the YMCA, and the line of distinction between the two facilities. Back in 2012, the county, when the county was making plans to build the YMCA and finalizing those documents, the county purchased that highway, that, not highway, that hallway, that's between, that's just east of the gymnasium, and runs north and south through, between the two buildings. And the school is working on a school safety grant, and they are working on ways to secure the building so that they have a single point of entry. And right now, one of the primary problems that they have is that the Busy Bee's daycare section is in that hallway, and it's behind what the school is using as an access door. So, some people have K-Fob's to be able to get in and, and attend to their children in the Busy Bee's that haven't been through the process of the security of going through the school. So, anyway, because of changes, because of the way that the needs of security of schools has changed in the last six years, the school is looking for opportunities to clean up that line and clean that security point. And one of the issues that's creating for the YMCA and the daycare, and in turn, the county, is that collection of bathrooms right on that corner, just inside between the two daycare rooms, between the two daycare rooms and the Busy Bee room back in that back hallway. The school has applied for a security grant. The YMCA has applied through IRR and has some grants, some additional grants, related to the mechanical needs and the plumbing needs to move or change or provide restroom facilities. And until we actually know what the proposal and the plan is from the school, I have nothing to share with you. I just wanted the board to understand that they've made an application, the Y has made an application. It's, and the, and the things that could be considered are the change in ownership, or the change in access to some of those portions of county-owned property, and/or the improvements needed in other portions of the county-owned property there. So, I would, I just want you to be aware that that's coming, and when those grant opportunities, if they come forward, if they, if we receive those grants, then we'll be coming to the board to act, to accept those grants and accept the subsequent changes to the facilities.
Questions or comments, Commissioner DeShaw? At what cost to the county is this gonna be if the grant doesn't cover this?
That's a great question, and it's an important one. Right now, we're working with an estimated budget of about a hundred thousand dollars to improve the restrooms in the daycare space. And I think we're gonna be looking at having, they have thirty thousand dollars already secured, and they're applying for sixty thousand dollars additional. So, we're probably looking somewhere between five and fifteen thousand dollars commitment from the county towards a hundred thousand dollar project and/or efficiencies in those projects. But, but right now, that's the, that's the gap that we see, is about ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Commissioner DeKer?
No questions.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this, this issue sort of relates to the issue we just dealt with, with revolving loan fund, that we are a community that is trying to accomplish a couple of goals, and that is to deal with the daycare crisis and to deal with their housing crisis. And so, this is a creative solution that's being proposed. And I just say thank you to all the great folks who continue on this path of solving these problems. And I feel like fifteen thousand is not a lot in the grand scheme of things, if we're going to be able to maintain safety for the daycare and, and make the, just make it all work better. And the bathrooms are a requirement, and it, these are complex, extremely complex issues, and I think we're, we're being creative and intentional and seeking to solve them.
And I'm not sure that the ask is for the county to provide financial compensation yet. I'm, I'm simply saying there's the unidentified source, the, the potential need in the unidentified source. So, whatever, whatever that looks like, I just want you to be aware that there's, there's two possible things, the modification of the building, potentially, and the assignment of the space between the, between the county and the school. And of course, that requires a whole process before that happens. But when and if they get notification of their grant, we will be looking at action related to one or both of those things.
I could just add, I'd like to thank our county administrator, Mr. Cadwell. I know he spent a lot of time in this. I've spent considerable hours in just meeting with the school, the architects, and so forth. And we're constantly trying to figure out different designs, what's gonna work, and as well as satisfying. And of course, and it's all contingent upon a grant from the state for the school to get the security funds, which is, you know, and I just don't know what's gonna happen then. But I guess we have to put that effort in, in case it happens. But it, it does, I think, also draw attention to some of the issues that we have in sharing space, and we gotta work on those. And so, thank you for your work on that.
Thanks.
Okay, if any other questions or comments, and then, okay, well then, we'll take a break till, oh, let's say seven after, about ten. And then, we'll reconvene with the Get Your Game and Trail issue.
Yeah.
And you know what? I don't know if it's being chair for the day, but my chair has not sunk.
Yeah, you're elevated permanently. You're elevated permanently.
And just in case if people didn't think I noticed, I noticed.
I think I got your chair.
But I was sitting there thinking, wow, when is it gonna happen? It hasn't.
Maybe it's all attitude.
No, it's not. I had pretty body, body movements.
That's why I made them.
Sensitive.
There's peanut oil in there. If anyone has a peanut oil.
Okay, well, we can solve all of our problems, I guess. We're trying to, though.
You wanna see what their reaction is?
Yeah.
So, what's in those chocolate?
Yep.
Here.
Finally talked to David, and I said, David, if I make all the coffee you want, if we can't get it out of the pot, you're just gonna pour it down the drain. He said, I thought nobody liked my coffee. And I said, well, that may be true too, but the pump doesn't work good.
Does he make the coffee, or does he get it someplace?
He makes it downstairs.
It took a long time to make it like this. He's been making coffee for years. You can see through it.
Uh-huh.
I hear asking for, at least five years. That's the good coffee. You get used to nothing happening. You push, you're rolling, you're rolling.
Good, Myron. Could I park my trailer?
Oh, sure.
No reason I do it.
If I can leave it at the lake, I'll never get it out. My son-in-law uses it towards spring.
Right. The location of it wasn't easy to get it out. Better place to put it. Other side of the road might be.
I'm like, are you scared? Are you not?
It's a little, it's a little elevation to get it out.
Just wait to see if the coast is clear.
Yeah, wherever you want to be put, we can only get it out.
Yeah, it's one, one place. Yeah, but that, I mean, there's another way at the bottom. You know, I have another possibility too.
Yeah, you know, there's a little turn out there.
Right, and it's clear.
So, speaking of classes, I'm not gonna interrupt you at this point, but how do I sign up for your health challenge thing? Just match you on Facebook?
Yeah, I will put, I'll add you to the group right now.
Awesome.
Basically, it's a Facebook group.
And then we need to get it to you.
There's a set of, there's a set of rules.
Right, I looked at the rules.
Oh, so you're, so you're, you must be in the group then?
Okay, I'm getting the emails. Yeah, okay.
Or-
Well, no, I'm not getting emails. I'm getting, I'm just looking on Facebook.
But you've seen the rules, so you must be in the group, and I'll check here. There's so many people. So many people are in it. It's a little-
Wow, oh man, so we're gonna need our staff.
No, it really, it really runs itself. I mean, I'll have-
Yeah. I know you were looking for volunteers.
Yeah, some people are volunteering, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, you're in. So, what, do you have a PayPal account?
Yeah.
You just PayPal me-
Okay.
The twenty-five dollars, and it gets added into the pool, and then you're on the list of people who are in it.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Just that easy.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Myron's in it too.
Oh, cool.
No, I'm sorry, not Myron.
They're doing it.
Oh, awesome, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You're doing the reservation better for next year, do you think, or, you know, the paving of the-
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're working on it. Oh, we're almost another month, they should be done, with all the gravel and pulver, to pave it in June or July.
Well, he does, he has allergy, he just doesn't like it.
Come here along.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, until my auntie was one of them, she was for the mushers.
Oh, brownies.
She had fish boil on Saturday night. She said, your auntie's left, and I said-
And you met me?
The whole point is when I get snagged, it's not that I can eat.
Exactly, yeah, come on in. So, fish boils, that, you know, I, I've been to them, but I don't really know how you, it's just water, onions. Because that's really a offshore kind of thing, you know, it's plank, they boil. But I love the idea of it.
Do the white fish boil in the fall, when white fish are-
Yeah, right, 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 like right now.
Nope.
Kind of sad.
It's chocolate.
In a month, October, it's probably the last one. And that's the only time I've eaten white fish, or fish levers. And white fish levers fresh are incredible, and I ate them with a passion. I can't think of one that I don't know. But a white fish liver's are amazing.
Maggie's specialist over in Bayfield.
Yeah, yeah.
They sell, buy a ton of it.
But I would only get, I would only eat them-
Yeah, you can only-
On October fifteenth. And if they haven't been frozen, yeah.
They're really high in air.
Yeah, yeah. Which is maybe the problem, because a lot of people have trouble with processing iron or getting iron. Because people who take vitamins sometimes can't do iron, maybe with iron, they should stomach upset, and I'm one of those. So, probably maybe that's the thing about liver. Yeah.
Don't eat rusty nails?
I try not to.
I just step on them. I lick them, but I don't like them.
Yeah, yeah.
You can hit the right pressure point when you step on it too. It's completely therapeutic.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jeff, it looks like we're filling up the Voyager volunteer position.
I'm so happy.
The Voyager volunteer?
It's Oktoberfest this weekend.
We're having, we're gonna have-
Oh, the community fund.
Board members at the Oktoberfest event, which is held in September, of course, but-
That notwithstanding, Oktoberfest will go on as scheduled in September.
Well, you know.
I got Myron's chair, just saying.
Did you take it or sink it?
Okay, it's like, do you like it?
What, is it, is it some minor problems?
Yeah.
The shock loses compression, it just kinda-
And just that's-
And lower and lower.
Yeah, and mine is-
And I got here before him, so I know he didn't switch it. And I didn't switch it intentionally.
So you, you just inadvertently-
I just need a little new shock absorber, one of those.
You know, we ought to. They're twenty-five years old. We ought to probably spend a little money to recondition them.
I noticed the chairs at the airport are looking really good.
They do. Maybe we should have our meetings up there.
Actually, that boardroom there is really swell. But I don't think, yeah, well, we could, once a year, have a board meeting up there. It's our airport. Yeah. We could have people fly in, or fly out.
The board can do whatever they want to do.
That's right. Well, within their roles.
Not the members, but the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Announce the meeting six weeks in advance or something, there's some-
No.
I think it's only three days to post a meeting.
Jamie and I are going to a little party tonight.
That's the floating caucus idea, that you change the location just before the meeting, so the people that show up at the door-
So, we're gonna go eat. You're going to a party at the car?
Meeting is held at Holborn tonight, but they're here.
I told her she doesn't get to drink beer in life, but she can have the-
They get to Holborn, and the sign on the door, the meeting has been moved to Toffey.
That'll dress.
That's the floating caucus.
Yeah.
And people on the inside know exactly what the meeting was all along.
Mm-hmm. That's the kind of thing we're trying to avoid, the government this day.
That was a Wright County, I mean, Carver County tradition.
Really?
Yeah, that's what I was told.
Are you kidding?
No, I was told they did the DFL caucus on that basis.
I saw that, I was like, wow.
Unbelievable.
There was a, the meeting was said to be in Waconia, get to Waconia, the sign says- There was a, the meeting was said to be in Waconia, get to Waconia, the sign says it. Meeting has been moved to Victoria. Legion Hall in Victoria, it says it's been moved to Chaska. To Chaska, the scientists, it's in Chaska. And by then...
Thankfully, it doesn't run itself.
Because you had to be at the caucus by eight o'clock. It'll eliminate all the people that you didn't want to be there. That, I was told that was the tradition in Carver County for some time. And there were some pretty sleazy DFLers in Carver County back in the sixties, so. I'm moving, it was true. And I don't have proof, don't have proof.
Close to water, close to all that stuff.
I can schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can schedule.
One of the Florida brokers at the State Capitol, his mother weren't speaking to each other.
Oh, my God. That's primitive.
Well, it was.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Yeah, we're...
It was the McCarthy.
Roll out and also the week before you just say, report your points. Health challenge I did. Verbally fun, there was different challenges and things to do for the day. The only thing I got annoyed with was one of them.
Carver County was the center of...
Put up a picture of eating something healthy.
What was it? It's a German Bund. There was, there were some oddities there during World War II. German oil is concentrated in Cologne, I think. It's in Carver County.
But I just wanted it because it was like...
There were some...
To get more valuable, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was built in for them.
Well, they were...
That's exactly what it was. I sent them a private message.
And so if you don't have an awareness.
I think so, how some of the German prisoners at war were harbored there too. And it was particularly friendly because it was a German...
Oh, it was Alaska, Jason.
A lot of their relatives lived there.
And I think some of them stayed. Some of them, you know, after the war, they didn't go back. Immigrated to the United States. Imagine how that worked. I think it did.
Well, we shouldn't forget that.
I enjoyed that ferry ride over.
Those are healthy brownies, I think.
We gotta get in all the treats we can before Monday. Restricted two days a week.
I know. Till one day a week?
We're doing this health challenge.
Yeah, the health challenge. Yeah, I can't remember that rule. Treats are only...
Whatever gets you through the night, right?
Health challenges.
Whatever you wanna believe, you believe. She was mad at me because she said I'd be doing this diet for a week and I bought food because I believe both of us were gonna do it. And I said, I was given two options. Either you eat what I eat, what I make, or you're on your own. And I'm like...
So you bought some food?
I'm being on my own.
As soon as in the challenge.
Is she?
She's added to the group.
Okay.
Whether she makes the commitment or not, she's got a few days to decide.
She's been, she's been actively out walking the dogs. And she has been actively changing the way that she eats.
That's right, tracking your food is one of the rules.
Yeah.
That's a good one. Yeah, that's a really good one. Yeah, all those rules are really good. Why don't I do them? Huh? Yeah. This'll help.
And my husband is doing it because this is what he has to do.
He's doing it?
Yeah, it was one of the conditions that he agreed upon in order to get a puppy.
Oh, okay.
Here are all the conditions you must agree to if you want a puppy. And one of them was, he has to do the health challenge.
Wow. Which means he'll be walking the puppy.
Damn straight.
Yeah, I would think that would be number one. Who walks a puppy? That'll be you. You're getting the puppy.
Yeah, kind of drove.
I built the fence around the yard.
So you don't have to walk it? Yeah, well, that's brilliant.
Which is probably a little more difficult in your situation. I mean, you could section some of it off.
Your cousin that lives in the west.
Yeah. They can jump the fence.
You do. You have a great, you have a great population there, don't you?
Yeah, they're not the ones that are being transported to Isle Royale today. They're not on the plane. Grandpa is going. What kind of puppy is it?
It's that, it's a mini Australian shepherd. And they are listed...
Ooh, awesome.
Third in the list of best breeds as running partners.
Oh, really?
He'll be my running partner.
Awesome, the dog or paw?
The dog.
Here's my old healer. This is where I lived in Bronze Valley. You can, you can kinda get a sense of where I lived. It was a town of five hundred people. My neighbor was a farmer.
And this is you.
That was me.
Yeah, pretty sure that's you.
If the camper's on the back of the truck and the boat is hooked up to the truck, then I might not be coming back for a while.
Yeah, and you're pointed out.
Yeah.
And that's your buddy. Oh, look at, you had lots of buddies.
That's Bear.
Wow, and is Bear gone?
Bears, they're both gone.
Okay.
I lost them again. Twenty fourteen and... Twenty thirteen and fourteen. I forget.
I was just holding on to the side of it.
Yeah.
But I'm sure, actually, we went to a cultural museum and there were kids drumming at the time and giving some lessons. But Dad didn't want to sit through the lessons, so I was like, I wonder if I can play.
Sweet, sweet.
Did you go to the tribal councilor in there in Oakland?
Tribal consortium. We went, I was, we went to the Native American... There was some museum of culture and they, it was really interesting. They had these like lodges set up.
Yeah.
Are you able to, are you free Thursday afternoon after one thirty for the closing at an evening?
No. I'm in Far...
Okay.
Thursday and Friday.
So we should find a commissioner who's available ideally, or I guess alternatively, we could delegate authority to Brady.
In each of these places.
And it's, it's just one document, it's like the closing statement or something.
But we don't wanna screw that step up.
No, we definitely won't, so.
Yep.
No, I never, I'm in Margot Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, Sundays.
Okay, so we just need a body of some authority to sign.
I don't know what I walked into. We need a body of some authority. Doesn't have to be aligned.
Thursday afternoon?
No, I will be in St. Paul.
I know that Commissioner Starley's not here to balance the week. Travels for the week.
I'm sorry, I'm...
Are you available Thursday afternoon to sign the document at the closing for the land exchange?
It'll be monumental. I wish I was here for that.
Cool task to have, I think.
I think so too.
I do have a commitment, but...
That'll look good on your resume.
We're still scheduling. It's a minor detail the Forest Service hadn't went out.
They haven't had enough time to figure that out.
Does any time work for you after one thirty?
Well, the earlier the better, in the afternoon.
One thirty or two?
Yeah, one thirty would be the best, yeah.
I'll be returning from, well, I don't necessarily need to.
Or you can make it two and I'll ride.
One forty-five?
One forty-five.
Sold, an action host.
And then I show up here?
Yes, we'll take the commissioner's room and I'll reserve it.
Okay, and what's it for again? Signing the...
Signing the land exchange.
It's a big deal, Myron. Huge, yeah, huge.
Yeah, that was discussed yesterday. At our intergovernmental trust. Okay, so I think we'll reconvene as everyone here that needs to be here. So we'll go to our county attorney Hickon for the Gichigami.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So apparently there was some mix-up and this made it into the printed packet, but not the digital packet. This is the final land exchange related agreement that I'm asking the board to authorize execution of. This is an agreement with the state of Minnesota regarding a parcel in Tofti through which the Gichigami State Trail, the paved bike trail, runs. So, once the property changes hands to the county, there needs to be a right-of-way agreed upon for that trail. The right-of-way is simply giving the state permission to administer, operate, and maintain the trail within a right-of-way approximately point five-five miles in length. So it's about a half a mile stretch. Thirty feet in width, a majority of the right-of-way, with forty feet width where culverts are needed to cross streams. Exhibit B of the document shows you in a map form where, where this trail is. Briefly, the term of the agreement, in this case, we're asking for a twenty-five-year term. It's not a lease, it's a right-of-way, so we can do that. And I explained in the most recent version of the request for a time before the board why that twenty-five-year term is necessary. According to the state, they need to be, they need that term in order to expand capital funding. Let's say they need to replace the pavement or, you know, spend a significant amount of funds to keep the trail in good condition. They need that longer term in order to be able to do that. And then there were some other minor changes made from the original draft, which you may not have seen anyway, because it wasn't... So I'm asking for two things from the board. I have a, if you see, exhibit C of that document is the resolution. We're asking the board to delegate authority to Mr. Cadwell to sign the resolution. That's number one. Number two, we're asking the board to authorize execution of the right-of-way agreement by the vice chair.
Okay, Commissioner DuKer, questions, comments? And we'll, these will take two different motions, correct? And, but we can, let's open up the discussion to either one.
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you, no questions.
Okay. So let's take the resolution to sign by Mr. Cadwell. I entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then for the execution of it to be signed by the vice chair. Motion, please.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just to add, we were discussing before we recommenced the meeting that the land exchange will be... We're gonna try to arrange a one forty-five closing on Saturday. And that will be in the commissioner's room. Probably not a lot of hoopla, but it's a, it's a big event in my...
Somebody should bring cake. Yeah.
We'd appreciate Mr. Vice Chair being present to sign the document.
I would also like to commend you for your diligent work and patience on this project. This again came up that I'm on a, called intergovernmental quarterly meetings with the DNR and the Forest Service. And I know that some of our meetings, we've really been pushing this, I have been really pushing it. And, you know, and I think there's just a lot of issues right now in governmental authority at the federal level. But I think I'd like to commend our supervisor, Forest Service Supervisor Cummings, and also our local people here that have really put some pressure on Milwaukee to get this done. We're the only one that has this going right now and all the rest are gonna wait, but they're really focused on getting this one done. So thank you, that's commendable to your work. Okay, employee concerns, commissioner concerns. Any employee concerns? If non-commissioner concerns, reports, or anything to note, let's take all three of those.
So I have just a question about the signing on Thursday. If I had room in my schedule, I'd love to just be in the audience, watching that monumental occasion. So there, there's no issue with me being in the audience, right?
Ms. Jenny's out of town and I'm out of town.
Right, so it'd only be if...
Please do come.
You and I, and, and you're not gonna be here, so it'll be good. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna try to be here, it'll be...
You can take it for me.
Yeah, awesome, thanks.
Any other commissioner reports or concerns?
Yeah, when we, when we discussed the YMCA earlier, that possible, the county may have to fund a portion of this, if or if not. But I think we always, we always bring this up probably once a month. We do have other facilities that the county owns that need work too. We got town halls, we got historical societies, we got, we always seem to forget about them. I think we need to actually sit down and take a look at how to repair these facilities.
I think that's well stated.
It's part of the hundred thousand we finally have in the budget. So when we get to slashing and cutting, let's not cut that hundred thousand out of our building repairs fund, because we need it.
And not to defend these things too intimately, because it depends upon other funding. But I know, I agree with you, I think we need to look at facility planning. I know we've talked about it as well, and it's gonna be a funding issue as well. But I, I think, I appreciate your comments that, you know, when we get through this year, and we could start on it this year, we should start looking at that seriously, because it just costs more. But it belongs to the public and, you know, we are obligated to provide services to all. But hopefully, we got a little start with that with the Wold study, but there's a lot more to be done, so thank you. Any other concerns, comments? Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At today's meeting, we, you know, talked about revolving loan funds and the EDA, and it's just occurring to me that it would be good to dedicate some time just to talk about the complexity and the... And maybe talk about some criteria, maybe some education that can go along with, particularly revolving loan funds. I think the level of complexity of running businesses in Cook County has changed and it's more competitive than it used to be. And it'd be really nice if we could create some, or link it to some education. So that, because I think it's really, when you loan somebody from the revolving loan fund money and they're not prepared to receive it, you create a really real, a big hardship for the county and the person receiving the money. And I think it's time to think about criteria and education that could be linked. Perhaps you've already talked about that on the committee, but we've got great opportunities for education here. The Entrepreneur Fund is here doing regular classes. Higher Ed is doing regular business classes. We have Pat Campanero, who really is doing a lot of the work that I'm talking about. But it'd be really nice if it was part of the policy or the criteria and loaning money that we attach it to, some education.
Yeah, thank you. And serving on that committee, you know, we're, I think, at least in the last two years now, we're really starting to look more seriously at this. We've learned some things. And I think, you know, what's gonna come forth at our next meeting, I believe, will be something, you know, that we're looking at. How do we retrieve some of this funding that, you know, people don't pay? And I think we're working through that process. But, and I know that some people are working on getting more money coming from the state for this.
Yeah, we have more need.
There's more need and, but thank you for your comments. I think we're working on it. We're revisiting criteria and we've looked at some issues and we're saying, maybe this is not the practice we should continue with. So we're working on some things.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, and everything is an individual case. We have to look at that too, you know, but...
Yeah. I mean, it's being done on a kind of a volunteer basis, but it would be nice if there were maybe a little bit more teeth in the... That people would be required to take certain courses or something.
And we've done, yeah, and we've done that. I think we've, we've told some people they, you know, we've turned down some. And of course, that hasn't become public.
Right.
Because they couldn't provide the proper documentation.
That's good to hear too.
So I think we're becoming more stringent on that, but...
Not good to hear that we're turning down applicants.
Well, we have, I mean, we're just saying, it's happened.
Business plans are required and things like that.
You don't, you don't have a good business plan. But we want people to succeed too, you know. It's, it's a tough, tough one.
So I have one more concern, and that, and that is, you know, in Cook County, we have this aging talent like the EDA, that we're really dependent on this really talented group of people to make really excellent decisions. to make really excellent decisions. And, and I don't know how you create recruitment on those boards and education on those boards to, for the next generation of people who will be leaving those boards, whether they be mentor programs or something. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just concerned, we're looking at a lot of people who are maybe aging out of certain really critical boards to the economy in Cook County.
We really have an issue filling boards. We have openings on our planning commission, we have openings on parks and trails. I mean, we had our meeting last night and we didn't have a quorum. And we're missing two, we're missing Myron and my district, we're missing people to be on the commission. And so, you know, we're...